Okay, I'm going to call the July 25, 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting back to order. We opened this meeting at 6:15 and went into executive session to talk about, to discuss your strategy in respect to collective bargaining. We approved a union-approved temporary title of public services librarian as a transition title until the current position finishes her masters, at which time she'll move to Assistant Library Director. With that, I would, as required by open-meeting law, I'm informing you that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this meeting. If anyone in the audience is audio or videotaping, you must notify the Chair now. Seeing none, would you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, given the heat, we'll try and get through this as quickly as we can. Anyone for weekly briefing?
Yes, hi, I'm Jenny Hewitt, Director of Brooksbury Library. I was hoping to just come here with good news to tell you about all the programs and services that we're offering, and this is the first summer that we're open Mondays in 11 years, and really, it's been gangbusters. We'll have 75 people at storytime, and really, every children's program is crowded like that. And they still get a good-quality program. You would think, you know, in a program of that size, it might not be, but we have an awesome youth services librarian. So anyway, things are going great, but unfortunately, I'm here to talk about, we have a problem with our emergency light inverter again, that developed over the weekend. Shawn Libby has been in touch with the manufacturer in California. He's going to try rebooting it tomorrow with some instructions from them on programming, and it may be resolved. I'm not that hopeful about it, truthfully, but if that happens, if he's not able to reboot it and get it back working, then we don't have working emergency lights again. So we will be looking at being closed. So I plan to make that decision by 10:00 a.m. and announce that we might have to delay an opening so that we can move things and set up our library in the lobby again, and we'll set up a location for kids to come and turn in their summer reading logs and get prizes, and pick up new books, and... So anyway, that, I've already talked with Carolyn, she's been really helpful about potential move of a lot of our programs to the community center if rooms are available. So we'll post all that, it'll be on our website, brooksburylibrary.org, and on the town website, Facebook, Twitter, or people can give us a call, it's 430-7562. Hopefully, you know, hopefully, we won't have to close, but I hated to pass up the opportunity tonight to at least let people know that there may be an issue. And last time, it was quite an extended time before they send a technician, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Peter, could I just comment on that? If you remember, when this happened last year, when was it last year it happened, Jenny? What was that?
October.
October, yeah. One of the concepts was to take the board that failed and get it repaired, and I think that Shawn had a lot of pushback from the supplier, if you will, and I don't think that ever happened, at least I never heard it happen, but that's something that with this system, it would be beneficial to have a spare on hand.
If that's the issue this time, but, no, they're not really responsive. He also, the system has no bypass, so he asked them for a price quote on that, and they didn't, they wouldn't even provide that, so... Right now, it's in bypass mode itself, which means we have regular lights working, but the emergency lights are not working, and being that it's a public building, we can't have the public in there without that.
Thank you. Anyone else on that? Any other public comment announcements? Okay, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, sorry. That we approve the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes. One, June 5, 2016 wastewater subcommittee, Board of Selectmen, regular session. The June 6, 2016, regular session, and the June 13, 2016, regular session. And B, approve application for a fair pilgrim congregational church for August 5 and 6, 2016. D, accept resignation of Myla Sikola from the Harwich Housing Committee. E, award the contract for catch basin replacement and installation to GFM Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $281,300. F, award the contract replacement of the DPW building siding to Architectural Consulting Group in the amount of $97,500. G, approve Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $614.82. H, vote to sign a letter of support for the CWMP for the Cape Cod Commission hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, any discussion?
I just have a question. I'm curious about E, and if it's every single catch basin in Harwich for that price, and I know Link Hooper's here, maybe he can answer that.
Good evening, Link Hooper, DPW Director. No, that is just an estimate of what work we might have coming up. We have approximately, I don't know, 3,500 catch basins in town. This accounts for, you know, probably 40 systems or something in that neighborhood.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to take up C now, you've noticed we skipped C. Peter's going to recuse himself from this one.
Okay, so C, approve election offices as recommended by the Democratic and Republican Town Committees.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C, approve election officers as recommended by the Democratic and Republican Town Committees. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings and presentations. Okay, on to old business. License recognition program at landfill update, and we also, we have Link Hooper here to give us an update on how the license plate recognition is going.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We started the license plate recognition program last winter sometime. We came to the board to inform the board that we were going to be installing cameras and put them out. This was in conjunction with Bonzai Logic, Donia Mahoda, who's in the audience as well this evening, and it's been a lot of trial and error. And I have to say that ultimately, the system has far exceeded my expectations. It has been working out wonderfully. I'll say that there was probably three times as much work involved in getting it functional to an operational level as I anticipated, Mr. Mahoda anticipated, and ultimately, there's still room for improvement. From a customer standpoint, I've talked to the both scale house operators, I spent an hour over there this morning, and I have to say that everyone seems extremely enthusiastic about it. The only question is, how does this work? That's what we get. People are more curious than anything else. They think it's fabulous, that you don't have a sticker to put on their car, or one to fall off of their windshield, and not having to stop at the scale house if they have the proper permit. I think the public is enjoying that very much. Being over there for an hour this morning, the first thing that dawns on me is how incredibly busy that facility is. And our expectation that one scale house operator could ever fully monitor both the commercial stream of traffic and the residential stream of traffic may have been realistic 20 years ago when I worked at the facility, is unrealistic today. And I think this measure, the camera, the license plate recognition system, has filled the necessary gap, that we were approaching, probably needing two people in the scale house. I will say that for the first two weeks of July, when the new permits are due, I did double up the labor there. The first week, we spent reminding people that were, had not renewed their privileges, that they needed to do so. The second week, which has always been customary, at least since I've been Director, the second week, we start turning people away and saying, "You need to go renew those." Some of the, a couple of questions that I didn't anticipate coming up, more comical than anything else, but we did have a couple of residents call saying that first week that, "I know I purchased my privilege, but my neighbor didn't, and he got by and could dump his stuff. How's this working?" And once we explained that we always give a week grace period, you know, people were satisfied with that. There's still some trial and error. I found out that the older green license plates, I don't know if you're aware of that, the older green license plates present a little bit of a problem in the recognition. There's some type of a little bit of a lag that happens on occasions where the vehicle is adjacent to the scale house before it triggers. Donia set it up so we'd get almost a knock, recognizing that it's picked up a vehicle and they're in the system, and a beep, an audio beep for the attendant if they're not in the system. We think we're going to make some of that go away by installing some, I don't know what you refer to, it's another one of like the car counters, and to trigger the cameras to snap a picture based on a pneumatic signal, rather than waiting for it to pick up some record movement through the cameras. I know, so much of this is very technical in nature, and I know you just wanted an update, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have. I got to conclude my statement by saying that Mr. Mahoda and Bonzai Logic has really partnered with us. They gave us a flat price to install the system and getting it up running, and I am sure that he spent three times the amount of time he anticipated doing so than he was compensated for. And it really feels like he partnered with the two scale house operators, and they collectively were finding out what works for them and what doesn't work. One thing that we didn't anticipate that he developed and put in place is up on the screen is a little app directly to go to our sticker tracker. So if somebody's not in the system, they can just put the plate in, at a separate keyboard, immediately, and you find out if they're in the system or not. So when the camera maybe doesn't pick up or misses a couple of digits, they can key that in immediately, and you know whether they should be there or not. And I think Erin and Cody both, Erin Germaine, the primary scale operator, and Cody Gross, have done a fabulous job with this transition. And I believe that, Donia, we made up a little handout, yeah, we made up a little handout when people come to the window and are curious about the system, we give them a little handout that explains it. And the feedback from the two scale house operators, the public seems quite enthusiastic about it. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that may have...
Start questions, would you now?
Link, I had a citizen come to me and ask, but also complain, that they thought maybe there was no camera in the back way in, that the back entrance from the DPW driveway, and that people were sneaking in back there. Said I would bring it up.
Okay.
Is there a camera back there?
No, there's no camera back there. This was, this was license plate recognition to work in conjunction with our existing sticker track database. Somebody coming in the back way has nothing to do with that. I have not heard of that. There's a lot of police and fire presence that fuel up there all times of the day, and I feel the facility's pretty secure. It is posted for official vehicles only, past the entrance to our office, but is there a physical barrier or camera taking? No, there is not.
Angela, any questions?
Well, where exactly are the cameras?
We did a good job disguising them, I take it. Right at the entrance, at the first, there's two cameras, we had to transition to two. There are two cameras. One is right past where the, if the gate, the main gate was shut, just inside that main gate. If we could have went up the street a little bit further before it splits off, you know how all the, you get a massive amount of pavement and then it splits into lanes, just past that is where the first camera is. And then probably another 40 feet down the road towards the scale house is the front-facing camera. Interestingly enough, two cameras will work in conjunction probably, I don't know, half the time, 60% of the time, if the timing is right. It's something like a half a second variation. If they're not, we get two reads, but nonetheless, the where? If there's two reads, there's two reads. Usually, they're both good or they're both bad. And we are, as the board requested, we are dumping the pictures, the images of the license plates each night. So the data that we have is only used for enforcement during the operational times.
Thank you.
Julie?
Yes. Ask Peter.
I'd just say that, Link, I know this was kind of your pet project, and I know you drove it, and this gentleman on here's done a great job working with you, but I think it was a good team effort. And I think in the beginning, there were some folks probably scratching their heads saying, "Wait a minute, is this too much technology for us," or whatever. And I think it's sort of remarkable, the system is working pretty smoothly from what I can tell. I mean, and I think any of us who stopped the scale house and whatnot, check in with, you know, those people and say, "Hey, how's it going?" And they all seem satisfied with it, so. And the general public, I think, is, I haven't heard any complaints about it, so it's working well, and I congratulate you and your team for getting it done.
Thank you. I will say it's not over. We're still making adjustments to it because there's, while I was there for an hour, I saw two missed reads essentially, where the cameras didn't pick the vehicle that was coming in up. You know, if I was to ballpark a number of what we're getting for reads, it's in the high 90s. Ballpark what we're getting with one scale house operator monitoring the scale traffic and trying to monitor the residential traffic, it's an impossible task with the volume we're doing. On a Saturday, we're over 2,000 cars, and I was amazed, and I invite anyone to come down, if you want to check the system out and see what really goes on, go park off to the side, and you're welcome to sit in the scale house for a little bit, and you'll soon see how busy it really is.
Is it air-conditioned?
Yes, sir. It is.
I don't think there's any chairs, you have to stand up the whole time, too.
Does the air conditioning work?
Yes, sir. It does. And, you know, Erin and Cody, I can't say enough that it's been a real team effort with Mr. Mahoda and my staff and myself to get this underway. And the whole objective, there's ancillary benefits, like not needing additional labor down the way. My whole objective was to make things more convenient for the residents, and I think eliminating that sticker has done just that.
Link, to your point on the scale house operators and the one versus two, on any given day, you'll watch six cars coming in on the residential side, and you'll see one or two cars lined up, waiting to get on the scale, and a couple trying to get out. How are they stopping cars if the license plate recognition go on and they get the bing that it's not a recognized plate, and they're working the scale? They go over to the other window and wave their hand out, get them on the way out, does that come up? Is there, is there much of a delay, or has there been much of a delay?
Yes, it is nearly impossible to have enforcement while you are engaged with a commercial customer. You see that constantly, one way or another. What they do is if it comes up unregistered, they've got a whole separate screen we've got set up that's kind of mounted up, that's within their view, with a separate keyboard. Something comes up that's unregistered, sees it, you can look at the image of the plate, and that reconciles, that's the first step, is to make sure you visually reconcile what the OCR came up with, the optical character recognition came up with to the actual image. If that is accurate and it doesn't, then she just write that, write that note down, and as soon as she gets a moment, pick the phone up and call up to the transfer station, or call one of the operators, or wait till the person comes out, and hopefully, she doesn't have scale traffic to contend with. Perfect system, no. To have 100% compliance and enforcement, you'd need two people. But I think the general public is doing the right thing, is trustworthy. While I was standing there, I saw a number of people that just pulled up, knowing they weren't in, pulled up and said, "I want the day pass." And Erin would have had no chance to get to the window while the traffic was coming in. So I'd like to think that most people are honest and are doing the right thing.
Is there a function on this system that would allow for a red light, green light? Is it practical to put a red light, green light on that?
I'll defer to, I'll defer to Mr. Mahoda, but I want to say, anything's possible. It's time and money. My main concern with that light, and that's what I originally envisioned, was to hold up traffic. I don't know if, when I say 2,000 vehicles in a day, you know, that might not sound like a lot, I welcome you to go down there and view it.
I've seen it.
And see, if you go in Saturdays, you get a feel for the volume that's going through there. What I didn't want is to make things less convenient for the residents. With that, if I may, turn it over to Mr. Mahoda to address the technical aspect.
Good evening, folks, thanks for having me. If I might just say thanks to the town, first of all, because the staff you have down at the transfer station, and as well as your management staff, has really been, I mean, I can propose a system and I can put it into place, but without the competence I've seen from them, we wouldn't have gotten where we are today, so. Specifically, the two down at the scale house, they do a great job. So if I can answer that question about the hot list, it's actually a very handy feature. It is built into the software that you can flag a vehicle based on license plate, and it's been indispensable in the enforcement process. But first, I'd like to zoom out and give you folks an actual figure that you may have never had before, in reference to how many unauthorized vehicles we have attempting to enter the facility. Because with a sticker system, you don't know. Even if the sticker's on the vehicle, you don't know for sure. We know for sure, because when we capture a plate, we reconcile against the system instantly. We know that person paid to be there. It is a 100% validation, not suggested as with a sticker. But I have worked the transfer station for two reasons. Number one, to obviously improve upon the system in an organic fashion, but number two, to learn the application of my system. It's one thing to sit at a computer and develop it, and it's another to actually work with the staff that uses it, and with the management that relies on it, and be able to make accordingly, according adjustments. So in the time I've spent down at the transfer station, which I would estimate at no less than 75 to 100 hours since the last week of June, since we've gone live with it, we have a hot list. And the way that we do this without a sticker system, if you're working the scale and you're very busy, you're trying 2,000 times a day to turn your head to the left to look for that sticker on each vehicle. Now, if a car gets past you, it's very easy to forget almost instantly what kind of car it was, what color it was, and like Link says, if you're busy with a commercial client, you don't have time to pick up the radio and call up there, so it's usually 10, 15 seconds later, at best, when they're trying to call for enforcement on that vehicle, and often by then, it's too late, 2,000 vehicles, again. But with this system, we have a photograph of that vehicle's plate, not the whole car and stuff, we've talked about the Big Brother, that's not here, but we have a photo of the plate, and most of the time, you can look at it and tell what kind of vehicle it is, right? So even if it's 10 minutes later, you can simply look right up and see the plate, and radio up and say, "This is the plate, they're 100% for sure, not authorized to be in this facility." Now, we didn't want to put this system into be Big Brother and send residents tickets, that's not the goal. As Link said, the goal is to make it easier for citizens and easier for staff, so it's not like we're out there trying to beat people up. But in that 75 to 100 hours, I worked that, which was, again, at eight hours a day, that's a minimum of 10 full business days, I put my businesses aside to learn this. When we see a vehicle that's unregistered, we've chosen, mostly because of the grace period, to just flag that vehicle in that hot list and enter them into this license plate in a quick note. At, you know, 10 o'clock on this day, this person drove in, they were valid last year and they're not now, or they've never been in the system at all, they've never been a sticker. So then we add them to the hot list. We've chosen not to go after people because, A, it's kind of unfavorable, and B, it's the turn of the fiscal year, so a lot of people just haven't gotten their validation sorted out yet. But we did, every time we found a vehicle that was unregistered and unauthorized, we've added them to this hot list. And that's separate from valid vehicles or invalid vehicles, which go, or beep, this actually goes woo, it's a really annoying siren. So we've taken the liberty of adding any authorized vehicles to the hot list, and if that person ever enters the facility again, it will instantly tell that scale house tenant, woo, and the notes will pop up, it'll say, "This is the day, this is what happened." Now you can, now you can actually engage that person in a real conversation and not be offensive, but you can say, "Hey, listen, you failed our system on July 10th, and your car failed today. If you could head down to Town Hall and get that sorted out, we'd appreciate it." So we can almost enforce in a nicer fashion that we can substantiate, but how many vehicles are on the hot list in the 75 hours, I have hours I set it up, and the weeks since I've spent a ton of time there? 15, 20, out of thousands, well over 10, 20,000 vehicles. We have 15 or 20. So good job, Harwich, if you're watching. For the most part, people are very, very honest here. 99% of the time, a system, a vehicle enters and fails the registration, by the time, which is, you know, a second or two, that you hear the beep and they're not valid, you look to your left and they're stopped to pay you, because they know it. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the citizens have been very, very straight with the system, which is what we expected, of course, and I also wanted to give some positive feedback on the online system that we've done with the online transactions. I know Amy's given me very good feedback, she loves that when the transactions happen, it just all goes right into the point-of-sale database, it's not like something they have to reconcile and then add here and do here, it's just, it's all automatic. But personally, working down the scale house, I've heard from citizens who said, "This is so cool. You know, I went online, I validated myself, and I just drove right in." And they say, "Is there anything else I have to do?" And we say, "No, no." We point it to the screen, and they see their plate, and they see, you know, it says, it says registered, and they drive in. So citizens have been very happy with the results so far.
Great. Thank you for all your time and sticking with us and giving the extra service.
My pleasure. Anything else I can answer for anybody?
Any questions from the board on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Link.
Thanks for allowing me the opportunity with this. I know when you say Big Brother and cameras, people get very defensive, but we're trying to play by all the rules and quell those suspicions of people, and we really are dumping everything each night, and I've had very positive feedback from the residents thus far.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. This is Sharon Fleeger, Harwich, citizen. This is more of an operational question, and I remember this came up when this first came out. If you're towing a trailer, in other words, not always, but maybe sometimes, and whether or not it had to be registered. When I took the information into register, because I was also picking up a beach sticker, so I figured I might as well do it all at once, and ask about, and I showed them both the information for the trailer, as well as, in this case, it was a truck, and one of the women there said, "Well, do you go through and have it weighed?" And, you know, I said, "No." You know, "He might be hauling leaves or something like that." And she said, "Well, then you don't have to do that." So I just want to make sure, because I got the impression that it's looking at both the front and the rear, and if that's the case, they're not going to be the same, and is that going to be an issue?
Yep. Great question, thank you, Sharon.
Almost forgot to address that, thanks for bringing that up. Because that has been something, I think, Angela, I think you brought that up last time, the trailers. It's been a simple solution, and it's the one that we thought it was, we just simply add that as a $0 item into the sticker tracker database. So let me give you the non-geek answer. If, yes, we get the front and the rear plate on every vehicle, so assuming a valid vehicle is towing a trailer, we're going to get the front plate, they'll be deemed valid. The next one, assuming that trailer has not been entered into the system, we'll go beep and indicate to the scale house associate that we have an invalid entry. At that second, they look right up at the screen, and they'll see, and this has happened many times, so you can talk to them, you'll see the front plate read, you'll see registered, then you'll see the trailer read, and you'll see unregistered. So the scale house descendant can see that and instantly realize that the front plate is fine. Now, let's complicate that situation and take these Floridians with trailers that don't have a front plate. Well, that's been a little bit trickier. There have been a few instances where it actually gets the rear plate of the vehicle, even though the trailer's on it, but surely, we can't rely on that. So instead, we've asked any citizens, and we've told the, again, nothing's final here, you know, when somebody rolls up to the window, if our system says unregistered, we can still have a conversation with the citizen about it, you know, we're not opening a viper pit and dropping the vehicle inside. So 99% of the time, if, 99% of the time, the citizen doesn't even stop, because they don't stop. You know, that's okay, that's how the system works, they just drive right past us, and the scale house associate can take a look. If there was a bad plate read, and if they so choose, I'm surprised at how many people they actually know in terms of saying, "Oh, I know that person's valid, I guess you do it every day," and you do, then they can radio up to the scale house, or anybody up there, or to the disposal area and say, "Can you have this person stop with me?" And that person can stop on the way out, again, if they choose to. But the very simple answer is, we have a $0 item within the application, and they can just add that plate to it, it costs nothing, the citizen can, I can't speak for the town's policies, but as far as I'm concerned, the citizen is technically able to just call the town, say, "This is me," they can look them up and see that they're paid and valid, and then, and valid, not invalid, paid and valid, and then say, "I have a trailer, I'd like you to add that as well." At that point, the town can just issue another, another permit with a $0 item, and now that trailer's valid as well, which will also expire on the same date the regular ones expire. So, great question, Sharon, thank you for bringing that up, because I did forget to address it.
Let me just bring something up. When I went to do that, the lady that was there doing that said that it didn't have to be, I didn't need that because it wasn't being weighed.
You did say that, I didn't address that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm wondering now whether they need to change how their...
Thank you, we should just hang out together, because I think we're going to handle this well. When, when a vehicle comes to the transfer station, they're one of two. They're commercial, and they're paying on the scale house, or they're residential and they're driving by. Again, I can't make decisions... Again, I can't make decisions for the town, but if somebody has a valid disposal area sticker, in my opinion, if they have a trailer as well, they should let the town know so we can add that too. Now, if they're commercial only, and they're never going to drive through, because they don't have a disposal area sticker, then it's correct. They, they wouldn't, there's no benefit in adding their trailer, nor would we, because they're not paid for validation, so we're not going to, you know, authorize a trailer plate if their, if their vehicle plate is not valid. If they're commercial only, there's no reason to really validate for the system, because they're paying every time they come. But more importantly, if their car's not valid, then their trailer couldn't be valid. But if, if, I, I can't stress enough, if a resident who is paid to go to the disposal area wants their trailer to be valid as well, there's no cost to it, just call Town Hall, talk to Amy or any of the staff there. And again, I can't speak for the town. They might do it over the phone. They might ask you to come down. I'm not sure. But the easy answer is, we'll just validate that plate. If you have a valid sticker, there's a $0 authorization for that plate as well, you know, so the plate will be valid.
Are the Erin and Caleb able to validate there at the transfer station?
They are, but that 2,000 number makes it tricky, you know. On a slow day, I, I should, I should rephrase that. The infrastructure's there. They have the ability to do so, again, as far as I'm concerned, they have the ability to do so. As far as the town's concerned, I'm not sure, and it's not my call, if they want to authorize scale house associates to add validations to the system, you know. Currently, it's set up such that they have view access. They can take a look at someone's plate and make sure it's valid. But they don't have the ability to create a validation for a plate. Again, that's a town decision. But the infrastructure, yeah, they would have the means to do so in January, when it's quiet out, and they would have the time, you know. But right now, to Ling's point, there, there's no time. These folks don't even have time to breathe in there. It's, you should see them try to get to the bathroom. I feel terrible for them every time. That's why I've learned all this stuff, so I can help out when I'm down there. So at least they can eat their food and go to the bathroom, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a, this is a question then for the board. Are the people that, that are downstairs giving out these tickets, and they may now be aware of that, but were they aware previously, and if they're not, they should be, to register both the trailer and the car? Because when I asked, she said, "Because we didn't pay, they didn't bother to register the trailer." So if you're saying, you know, that it can be done, even though you're not paying for it, because you're not weighing it, maybe the people down there need to be aware that you need to do both, even if you're just pulling it.
Thank you. I'd say if they're not, they will be.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. There's been a little bit of a work in progress, so, you know, we can certainly make sure that we inform. I think we've had a, a little bit of a turnover too, so we have newer people that are working down there, so we can make sure that...
I did this the very first week, all right? So again, that might have been all new, but just in case that not everybody is on board with the same information, it might make it easier going forward if they know to do both, even if you're not paying for it.
Great. Thank you.
I truly do not want to belabor this point. However, my initial reaction about registering a trailer is negative, and here's why. You put a, validate a trailer, which is odd. Not that you don't, ma'am, but it is odd to come to the disposal area with a trailer that you're not going across the scale. We ask that people go across the scale with leaves and yard waste, with everything. You show up with a trailer with your household trash that's stuck here, you didn't pick that up at your house, let's face it. It is odd. I'm saying that it doesn't, it may happen, not that frequently. If you register a trailer that's valid, and somebody else has your, has your trailer with an unregistered tow vehicle, now we've allowed somebody in that shouldn't necessarily be there, or shouldn't, shouldn't have paid. There's just, keeping it with the vehicle is much cleaner. And ma'am, you're, you're the only person I've heard this from. We sell, we sell about 5,700 primary stickers, or, I'm sorry, primary permits. We don't want to call them stickers anymore, a year. And this is the first time I've heard this as a, as a question, and we could certainly add this on a case-by-case basis, but I, I would not take blanket action on this.
Thank you. Janelle?
I think Linda brought it up, just, I think she does what you do. She brings her trash barrels on a trailer, because she drives a Mini, and she brought it up last time. But if, I understand what you're saying, because I was thinking that same thing, you know, that the trailer would be registered, and, you know, I could go borrow someone's trailer and go to the facility. But if the front license plate isn't valid, wouldn't it still buzz? What is it, bing, buzz?
Well, not if you're from Florida, or some other state. I'm saying there's a lot of unknowns for us just to sit here and say, "We should do this." I could certainly think about it, take it under advisement. If I hear more than one request out of it, maybe, maybe we should consider it. We could certainly take care of your trailer, ma'am. That, that should not be a problem.
So case by case, right?
But I, I just don't see it as, it hasn't been a large request, and since we've got front and rear, it's doing a pretty good job of picking it up.
Great. Thank you, Ling.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Next up on the agenda is a status report on Saku Tuckett Harbor Waterside. John Rendon couldn't be here because he was on vacation. I did see that he sent Charlene an email.
Yeah, I can do a overview. He, he is away, as you indicated. He indicated that he's gone through, the final design is pretty much all set. They're doing a final review phase. They have done some test borings, if you would, of the sentiment, and they're working on getting those. They're out, out to applicable state agencies. They were sent back in March. They're trying to get the results of that. The results are significant, because if the suitability determination of the disposal material, if, if the chemistry is too much, I want to be careful how I say it, hazardous, then you can't just pump it to another, you couldn't put it up on a beach, or you couldn't put it out to sea, and you'd have to find a disposal site. Obviously, that would drive the cost significantly as to being able to relocate it from one part of the watershed to another, versus pumping it out and actually having to truck it off. So that is, that, that is in front of the Army Corps of Engineers. They are reviewing that. And once they do their final determination, that will give us an indicator. If they do come back, another option that they could have is say that they need additional biological testing. So until we get that Army Corps of Engineer permit, it is very, very common that when you issue a bid and send the bid out, that you would have all the applicable approvals from the various state agencies, and you would require that that vendor that wants to do the work would have to comply with all the approvals that have been given by the various state agencies. So that's kind of where we are. We're still in the, the process of getting the Army Corps of Engineer approval. He does also have a note here that coastal zone management permit is also pending, as well as a couple other small ones. So once all those permits are done, then the bids will be able to go out, and hopefully, we will commence work. It was always anticipated to do the majority of the work after the season. I know we're coming up on after the season here pretty quickly. But, you know, I think it's going to take a little bit, that if we don't get out, he is here, if we don't get out the bid by mid-August, then that may lead to some additional delays in, in the timing.
Thank you, Chris. Comments or questions from the board on that one? Great. Thank you, Chris. The next one is OPEB investment policy statement amendment. So I'm going to, Chris, I think I'm going to ask you to explain this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do this one as well. On the, we, we actually, I think in the time that I've been here, we, I think it was for the, the former town treasurer had had, you want to have an investment management strategy for how you invest money that the town has. So we did put forth before the board, and the board did approve, an investment policy statement that was signed back in January 2015. The problem is that when we established the OPEB fund, we now have an active manager. Before, we just had money, and then the treasurer would invest it. Now, the treasurer has signed up with Rockland Trust to invest it. The Rockland Trust is obligated to follow that investment policy statement. A lot of this, because municipal government has year-to-year budgets, a lot of this is short-term. There are times, very, very common, the pension plan through Barnstable County, because that has a longer time horizon in which the money is held. You can do what they call the reasonable, the prudent man standard, that you can invest in equities over a longer period of time. You do try to match those equities up to the various Dow Jones industrials and things of that nature to make sure that you mirror those. When we, when we established, and we have only recently established, the OPEB funding, that we, they've asked Rockland Trust to be able to look at a longer time horizon than one year. So what, what the request is here is to have this be allowed to be done. And this is all governed too by state law, so it is governed by state law that gives them that prudent man standard, is to exempt out the OPEB investments, that they would not fall under the investment policy statement, the short-term investment. They literally have a list of everything that you can invest in, so it literally, really ties up for making sure that they're the safest investment. This would allow, by doing this exemption, would allow for that prudent man standard to be done, and would allow for the investment of these monies over a longer period of time.
Thank you, Chris. Angela? Any questions? Julie?
No, I don't have any question.
Peter?
No, but I'd be willing to make a motion if you'd like.
Thank you.
I think there are two motions, or one motion, including both things. I'd make a motion that we endorse the investment policy amendment. It was initially endorsed on January 20 of 2015 by the Board of Selectmen, amended now to exclude the OPEB funds. Let me just do that one for us, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You mind repeating that real quick, Peter?
I moved that we, we accept the, or adopt the investment policy amendment as proposed by the town treasurer to exclude OPEB funds from the investment policy.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to adopt the OPEB fund investment as proposed by the treasurer collector. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, we also have before us a Tonaharich OPEB liability trust investment policy statement, which I would move that we adopt, and that is specifically OPEB liability trust.
Correct. Julie seconded that, so it's been moved and, and accepted to adopt the OPEB policy. All in fa, any discussion on that?
Well, just a discussion that next year sometime, it would be helpful if you brought back to this group what was earned, how much was paid to the bank, that kind of situation.
I think now that we have it under active management, they'll give us those reports.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the next up was a transfer station and beach sticker sales update. Amy couldn't be with us tonight. This was, started with me. I had got a few complaints from residents talking about the, I think it started with the rudeness of some of these ticket agents. Amy did send a letter and spoke to Charlene about this. A lot of the comments were, were that we had changed our policy. Amy confirmed that we didn't change our policy, we're just enforcing now a policy that's been on the books. So no longer are people allowed to share transfer station stickers, and they're not allowed to get guest beach passes for out-of-town people staying in their homes. Chris, do you care?
Yeah, I can provide a little bit of additional information. I do have material from Amy. I, I think it's important that there was, I don't believe there was any formal policy that was issued by the Recreation Department previously. So when Mary McIsaac was here, she did do that. And what that really did was tightened up how things were done. What Mary had relayed to me is that you would have a person who was a resident, they would come in and they would ask for six stickers, and they would give license plates or, or car information from six people from out of state. And they would say, "I want residents' stickers for all these people." Well, it's obvious that they're not residents of Harwich. They should not have been paying that. So she did go to the Recreation Commission to get that policy adopted, that residence means residence and out-of-state means out-of-state. So that was corrected, not this past year, but the year before. That has been being enforced. It started last year. They were a little bit lenient last year. They're a little bit more stringent this year. I know a lot of the signage, we do ask people to come in with the, the car registration, so that way it's definitive. If it says Harwich, then we know it's a Harwich resident. If it doesn't, then it's a non-resident. So I, I think that that part has led to some people not happy to necessarily follow the rules. The other thing that we, we did do this year, that she indicated, that we did get five brand-new customer service representatives to the point about kind of training people to make sure that we have, so we do have a newer staff. I don't want people to think that we just had new people down there by themselves. I think Amy's done a good job of having a seasoned person, so even if she takes one of her staff from here to get down there. But certainly, during certain times, there's a, a pretty good amount of people. We did tweak also the hours. Last year, we did eight to three. They realized that after 3:00, not too many people go to the beach too late in the afternoon. So based upon the amount of sales, we did kind of tweak that and reduce that down to eight, eight to two. And we did have, actually, I was chatting with her today, because I, not today, the last week. We did have one time in which we had a line, and, because I do look, obviously, we have several here in the building, and there's never really been a lot. It's probably about three people. But I think it was on July 4th weekend, that last, the Friday that we were open, that a couple of her staffers were away, holiday weekend, where 4th of July was on a Monday. So she was running kind of short-staffed, so we did have a little bit of a line. But I think, you know, obviously, we always want to encourage people, you know, don't wait to the last minute to pick up these things, because you could run into, run into some issues. The one thing I, I did also ask her to provide, or staff to provide, and I just got this this afternoon, was just a sense for the flow, the number of transactions and the amount. So taking the same period of time last year to this year, it's actually remarkable at, at how close the information is. In both cases, it's about a million-one that came in. On the resident beach passes, there was about 7,093 last year, and la, I'm sorry, this year. And last year, it was about 7,000, so we're within 100 on that. On the dump stickers, I'm sorry, on the plate recognition, this year, the current year, we had 5,099. Last year, 5,073. So the, the volumes are very much on target. And one thing I did ask them to provide was on the chamber, they did break out how many people have gone down to the chamber. We started that when we started this program about two years ago. And the chamber is open later, so the chamber's open till 5:00. So people are given the option, the chamber's much closer to the beaches too, that they had 833. So out of that 7,093 that we've issued, 833 were purchased down there. So people are making use of that. There's parking, obviously. We did that expanded parking lot with the TD Bank. So we have more parking in that area, and people are taking advantage of being able to, to purchase the, the beach permits at the, at the chamber. Yeah, and one of the things that we, we have talked about, and we continue to, I, I wish we were doing better, but once people are in the system and the cars are in the system, we really want to continue to look at, how do we do the online payments? So again, because you have the physical sticker, the physical sticker on the beach stuff creates an issue for us. But we want to try to encourage as much as we can for people that if you have the existing sticker, the existing same car you had last year, you know, you should be able to pay online and then just come in and pick up the, pick up the sticker. So, you know, we, we are encouraging that. We, I don't think we had data, because when people do a transaction at the window, we use the same software. So it doesn't know if it's com, well, it knows, but we can't differentiate who's coming in via the internet versus who's coming in via the window. So we weren't able to decipher how many people actually use that external option as a, as the means to, to make their payment.
Great. Angela?
At the end of the material you provided for us, is a very good listing of what a resident is and how you qualify. I, I had not seen that anyplace before. It might be helpful that, that you're to hang up someplace, so people can understand what a resident is and who dependent children are. It's, it's, I think it's well done.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. I get a little bit nervous about sticker shock, having too much paper on the windows all over the building.
Well, I was thinking of that.
We can do that. One of the things we're talking about, Angelo, too, is to do a mailing, to kind of remind people, and that would be a great opportunity to put in the mailing that information, so that way people...
Online someplace, just so people can find it.
Actually, tied into that, I had a question. So I, just because we have a lot of, you know, people who are retired, who might be registered in Florida, because they have their own reasons to do that, right? And then, but they're really like six months, you know, that kind of thing. How does that work? that kind of thing. How does that work?
It's covered here.
I think here, they have on their sticker eligibility, if you're a resident, if you brought in a residential tax bill.
Okay, so as long as you have a tax bill, yeah. I saw that, but I wasn't sure if it still applied, so, okay.
Great, thank you. Chanel?
No, I don't have anything.
Peter?
I'm good, thank you.
Great. Thank you. You know, I went down there and got my beach sticker and dump sticker, and they were very polite. Of course, I had my registration, everything I needed. My daughter also went down there recently, and she said they were great to her as well, so. I did not experience any.
I do appreciate the feedback, though, because when these requests come in, I do forward it to the department head. It's a good opportunity to just kind of educate folks that, you know, if we're getting any kind of complaints, just to remind people. You know, sometimes people aren't always the nicest as these people are doing their job, and I try to make sure we remind them that, you know, make sure they maintain a positive outlook.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a library exterior preservation project. We did receive a letter from the library director, Junie Hewitt, received, I think, on July 13th. In that letter, there was some concern about the Board of Selectmen vote for a $25,000 limit, significantly below the estimate for architectural services provided by the consultants. The, it's mentioned that the engineer, the facilities manager, and the town administrator all endorsed using the same firm that gave us the original quote. It is also mentioned that 64,000 was the original number that was in the CPC article, and voted by CPC and voted by town meeting. So questioning whether or not we could change what was voted by town meeting. Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity, a couple things by way of update. Well, one thing, at that meeting, I had come in and had indicated that the 25,000, in my mind, and I think the board agreed with this, was for to do the design spec, the actual specs to go in, and that there was, if there was additional costs related to resident inspection services as it was being designed, that that would not be included within the 25. I believe that was the intent of the board. Just to, I did have a meeting with both Bob Cafarelli and Sean Libby, informed them of the $25,000 limit. I did talk to Sean a little bit earlier this afternoon. He was talking about all the various issues we've had in the, in the building, in the various buildings, but we did talk about this. He was able to get a hold of the, the original designer. He had indicated that he wanted to have a detailed estimate submitted. He reminded me that that 64,000, it was two parts to the project that was originally done. The one part was obviously the painting of the building, but the second part was the streetscape. So that streetscape was segmented off. It was not segmented off, and that's $64,000. So he is going to submit a quote to us that will have in there the design elements of what to put into the bid spec, the detail of the resident inspection, and then obviously, he will take out the components related to the streetscape, because that will have to be done as a secondary phase to the project. I guess my recommendation to the board is, why don't we give them an opportunity to put together what that, what that quote is or proposal. I told Sean that even if it's below 50,000, that, you know, I would like to just come back before the board, so the board's aware of how that broke out, and to make sure the board's informed towards that. So hopefully, he'll have that. I think he just spoke with them, it may have been yesterday, not yesterday, it may have been the end of last week or even today. So he spoke with them fairly recently. So give them a little bit of time to submit the proposal, have him write a recommendation, and then if there's something that's needed to be done, we can come back before the board.
You see any delay happening from going that route? And is there any, is there any merit to the CPC article was voted at town meeting with specifics in it? I know the scope of work has changed, but should we rescind the vote on the 25,000 so that it's not in the way? I mean, did the board vote when the board shouldn't have voted?
Well, I didn't get the beginning part of that discussion. My recommendation would have been to, you know, I know Sean is a diligent guy, as well as Bob Cafarelli, we're not going to spend money just for the sake of spending it. So I think having that, you know, flexibility of letting them negotiate something and having it come in, I mean, I'd hate to come back before the board if the, if the proposal comes in at 27,000. Now we have to wait, especially in the summertime here, we have to wait for a board meeting. So I personally think it makes more sense to give us the discretion to be able to just go ahead and award that, provided it's within the funding of the article.
Thank you, Chris. Angelo, any comments on this?
My only comment would be, why can't we wait till we get the bid? What's another week? We get the bid, and then we can vote for a precise bid at whatever level, and for the, for precise activities, rather than guessing again.
Julie?
Does that cause them any kind of a delay, in the sense that if they don't know if they have the money contractually with the architecture firm, or, I'm just asking?
I think the only delay would be if, if we get that proposal, you know, next week, and the board would have to make it, you know, the chair would have to make a decision whether you want to have it on with a non-resident taxpayer meeting, or, you know, it would be more just, I think, operational, a minimum of two-week delay.
No big deal, especially, it's not a, it's not an activity that needs to be done this month, or this week, or this day. So it's late a week.
Chanel?
I have no opinion.
Peter?
I think I was the one who originally proposed 25,000. I think you know why. I can show you the documentation. We just finished St. Christopher's Church with CPC funds in Chatham. It's at least as extensive as what's being proposed over there. This segment of the work, not the, the streetscape, but the other work, was done by our firm for less than $25,000. That's where that came from. I think that it's good to keep the pressure on this team and say, "We're not going to make a final decision till we see your numbers." This is value for taxpayers, quite frankly, no matter what was voted at town meeting. I think it's our obligation to make sure we get the best value for the taxpayers. So I think waiting another week or 10 days, whatever, is appropriate.
So my only sense is that the, I mean, I think that this was very well-written, and I think that there is a concern that town meeting did speak, and town meeting voted to approve this article, and if the amount's in there, there's no sense in us holding up the project for a week, or even three days.
Town meeting voted that as a maximum.
Right.
Generally, the selectmen can spend anything below that, and if we could get it for $300, I think we would give it a shot. But I don't think that's in the cards. We don't have to spend everything. In fact, we don't have to spend anything that has been voted.
Peter?
Quite frankly, yeah, we took up a siding replacement contract tonight. Funds were voted for that. Anybody compare whether that, how that did relative to what was voted and approved at town meeting? I don't think so. Maybe they did. But again, it's our job to get the best value for the taxpayers.
That did come in below the budgeted amount, just, we do look at that.
Okay, no action from the board? Okay. Under new business, we have a letter from Sandra Hall regarding Harwich Home Rule Charter. Sandra sent this back to me on June 26th. I distributed it to the board a couple weeks ago, or no more than a couple weeks ago. So you've all had time to read it. I've gotten comments from a few of you. The letter starts with pursuant to inquiries from your board and the finance committee during the 2016 town meeting season with respect to the Harwich Home Rule Charter. The following is an outline of area concern observed, the recent, past, or currently occurring. The issues are addressed in order of placement in the charter. You know, the, in reading through these, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different committees or, or parts of town that are involved in this. A couple specific to us. The one, the one big one that I see specific to us, and there's no specifics in this, but it's pertaining to board members going into department heads, without going through the town administrator. So I just, I want to really comment on that one, that we're not to go into department heads, we're not to, I haven't witnessed it, I do not specifically go into department heads. So that, that one I want to address, and then I wanted to hear what the board had to say about the letter, and then take an action on, on where to send this. Angelo?
Let me make a comment in what you just mentioned. I've been watching that for the last eight or nine years, and so has Peter. It's gone down tremendously from where it used to be, and I think even Chris will, will say that. Five years ago, or a few, even longer than that, and I'm sure when Sandy was a selectman, that was the norm. I haven't been into any office of any person except to say goodbye to Dave Spitz, and I, I don't see everybody else going in.
I, I hope it's gone down to zero, so, with this board, anyway. Julie?
I just want to be clear, too, that I was in conservation as part of my job, in terms of nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen.
Great, thank you. Chanel? Peter?
I think this one potentially is serious enough. I mean, if this is going on, then number one, I would at least get back to Sandy and say, "Do you, are you aware of any instances of the current board?" Let's deal with that for us. The current board, and it does say here anecdotally, but if any of us are doing something we shouldn't be doing in this regard, please let us know. I don't think we are, but if we are, that's one thing. The other one is that, you know, she, I think she references in here, you know, read us in the public address to do the understanding, understandable concerns for the jobs. I know previously, there's been some discussion at the board level about having an ombudsman or somebody who could be, that somebody could go to and at least raise their concerns if there is an issue. Maybe we ought to think about that. Maybe that should be the town administrator, as far as, you know, what the Board of Selectmen's doing. I don't know. But there ought to be somewhere that employees can go to if a selectman is doing this.
Yeah. Just, just to move on to, to other issues in here, I find this document very confusing, because I am pleased that somebody has taken the time to write this in and that we can deal with it. But the number of mistakes that have been made in here is unbelievable. And, and this is a dangerous document, as far as I'm concerned, and we need to sit down with Sandy and go through it, line by line. For example, if you take the first section, and it, just in that order, and the finance committee is arguably acting out of its, what it's allowed, she's not reading the charter. The charter says that they are supposed to do something in the line of anything financial, but nowhere in the charter, and I have it here if you want to read it, does it say they can't do anything else. And it was never an intention. The other interesting thing is, only the chairman is invited to town meeting, although for years, the entire board has been going. But, so that's wrong. And, you know, and arguably is a very interesting word, because arguably, arguably, I could state that Sandy Hall was brought up in Ho-Ho-Kiss, New Jersey, where there are a lot of people with the Hall name. It's just, it's just one of those statements, and I don't think you should have that kind of thing. There are other things in here. There's a thing about the planning board, which, by the way, has a very bad pattern of people getting out of the board, so a lot of them retire, turn over in the same year. But we have a notice on Copland and Page. The only thing we can do is appoint people for one year, for three-year terms, or to fill an empty term. We need to have the charter review committee give us authorization, and you can read it in the Copland stuff if you want, because otherwise, we would be violating the charter. So that becomes a problem. Planning board, okay. Then there's a, it says there's a problem with town organizations, organizing, when town agencies or committees organize, there's a problem, and she points out the health committee as being a problem. Well, in this document, it says that committees need to be organized. It doesn't specify how they need to be organized. It doesn't say every committee needs a chair, a vice chair, or a clerk. It just says organized. And the health committee is organized. I would prefer that we had some layout of how the committee should be organized, but we don't. So, and if you go through this, virtually every one of those statements in here has an issue which relates back to the, to the, uh,
Charter.
To the charter. And, and the one thing I, I'm very pleased is that I know about a year ago, that the comment by the writer of here was that the charter was perfect and doesn't need any changes. And the last comment in here is that she understands it does need some changes, and I think that's a lot of movement. And I think we need to, in the next couple of weeks, give a list to the charter review committee of things that we want, that we want looked at. There, I don't want to go through one item after another, I really don't, but there is, there are issues, all, including the comment about training. What we've been doing in the last year hasn't been gone on ever. We've hired people to come in and get, present meetings, we've had committee meetings with our legal people, with people giving them advice on what open meeting regulations had to be dealt with. You know, if you were on the committee, as we were talking to people, we're interviewing, interviewing, we would tell them the process and what they had to do. The town clerk, when she swore them in, would give them a book that was just been, you know, reauthorized, rewritten, rather, with information. So this is a very difficult document, and I hope it doesn't get around too far because it's wrong. The other problem with people not being sworn in, and you and I were on the interview committee at the time, and we found that out from Anita, who does the swearing in, and she told us there was an issue. Since that time, we've made announcements in this, in this meeting. Each of us has about eight committees we're liaisons to, and we've told them what to do. So we've taken steps in that area, because it's a bad area to have a problem in. So I think we need to, before this goes too far, have it checked out. And also, I think we need to do, make these changes, including the, the way we tell people about the openings. I don't think we want to go back to last century's way of doing it, because I think email, email and the web and those kinds of things, or this meeting, are the fast ways of doing it and reaching people. And that change we've talked about also has to be made, I think, so.
Any comments, Peter?
As far as the swearing in goes, it occurs to me that, obviously, that's an important topic. Since Anita does the swearing in, I'm just wondering if there's a way to have her keep track, provided that our office sends who the members of all the committees are. There should be some kind of spreadsheet kept as to when people were sworn in, when they're expired or whatever. And it seems to me, Anita's not here, but it seems to me she should be the one to be controlling that, in my opinion.
I believe she just did that.
Yeah, she does have a, she does record who gets sworn in.
Okay, then if people are not sworn in, there's some way that they have to be notified, and the chairman of those boards and committees need to be notified that that person can't serve until they are sworn in.
That's right.
That would get them.
We've told them.
Yeah. The other thing is, I would say is, the moderator's mentioned it several times in here, the finance committee's mentioned several times. I think it's at least worthwhile to give these comments, those areas that address them, give it to them and get their feedback. The other thing I would suggest, Angelo, since, you know, I understand you're very familiar with the charter, and you've gone through this in great detail, I wonder if maybe you and Michael sit down with Sandy and try and figure out, are there any interpretations here, or is it very clear, these are issues or not issues? And then come back with a suggestion that says, hey, here are the seven things that we really need to get the charter review committee focused on and let them fix them.
Yeah.
I think that's a great recommendation. I think I would rather just Angelo meet with, if it, to the board's pleasure, just Angelo, take your list, we'll set up an appointment with Sandy, go through one by one, and then, exactly as he said, go back to finance committee, and then deliver it where it needs to go.
Why, why?
Go back to finance committee with the things that we recommend, or things that they've been accused of.
Well, I would suggest we need two people.
So we'll be forming a subcommittee.
Yeah, if you have two, then it would be a formal subcommittee.
How about the town administrator?
I mean, I'm happy to, if you want, I'll partner up with you, Angelo, to meet with there.
I'd like to avoid another subcommittee.
That's fine, I, I.
I do think we probably should send it to the finance committee and the moderator, though, because the ones that are not related to the board, why, why pursue what you don't have jurisdiction over?
Yeah. If it's okay with the board, I'll send that to, send that to them. I do know that the charter review got a copy of that, as well as town administration already, and Don Howell. Administration already, and on Howell.
You know, you know, this board, a year ago or two years ago, asked the Charter Review Committee, as we filled it up again, to start at the beginning and go through and make it clear and not confusing and understandable, and change those words. We never gave the committee, at that time, direction on how to change what was being, what was in the Charter. We just wanted to make it clearer. I mean, if, for example, they want, if the goal is to have the Finance Committee just do financial articles, if you put the word "only" in the sentence, it makes it happen. You know, it's not, this is not difficult.
Chris, would you like me to facilitate that meeting?
Yeah, that would be great. Just one thing on the, I, I happened to be at the Finance Committee meeting when they talked about the article, and, you know, it says it's non-monetary, but they asked for money to do legal expenses of $5,000. So there, there was a monetary component to that. And, and I happened to be at that meeting with FinCom, and, you know, they, they discussed it, and they thought it was apropos to talk about it because it had a financial impact. So.
Okay. Okay, next up is the Board of Selectmen FY17 Goals and Objectives. This is a, another edited version. There is, it starts with the goals and objectives. There's an outline, and then it goes into the goals, objectives, with the actions and deliverables. I sent this all to you about two weeks ago. I received comments back from Peter. I got a comment back from Janelle, and I received a comment back from Angelo. I changed some of it. I did have a meeting two weeks ago, where, after the last meeting where I went through this with Charlene, she and I had the, the agenda meeting, and we went through some of the points. So I'll open it up for discussion. Angelo?
This is my night, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I apologize in advance. As you know, we met with folks from Chatham last week. One of the questions that we had answered in the last week, actually finally today, was the set of goals that you brought from Chatham, what were they? Does, does the town manager have to fill those in a timeframe, et cetera, et cetera? And the answer, if I have it correctly, was that basically, that was the goals and objectives for the Board of Selectmen, had nothing to do with the town manager, except she, in this case she, kept track of the activities and, on a spreadsheet, as an aid to letting the selectmen know where, where it was, where each project was. And went, and there was nothing in there that had any impact on her salary or, or evaluation, et cetera, et cetera, if I, if I have the whole thing correctly. So that being the case, I, I find it very hard to vote the whole list that you had provided as something that should be completed in a year, because I don't think that's going to happen, or completed by the town administrator. I think those make very good goals for us, and it may take one year or two years to get them done, but I think they're, they're good things to do. And, and I think, I know the board hasn't discussed all of them, but I would suggest going back to the document that I had sent you a while back, that had the fact that the town administrator needs to fill all of the state and county and town charter goals, like the finances and the budgets and whatnot. And then give him three or four goals, and give us three or four goals. And I gave you the sheets. Now, these are my choice of goals. I understand that other people on this board may, may have other ideas of what should go in there. But I think that this group, it's tough with that sound, it's, that, that this, that this group look at three or four targets that we should work on now. And, and I, I don't know if anybody else has these. And remember, these are suggested more format than it is a suggestion of, please do these, okay? Because I know there are things in there that, that I want done, but nobody else does. But.
Okay, I'm just going to respond to what Angelo said. As far as Chatham goes, if you just look at Chatham's website, it actually breaks out the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives, which is what these are. And Charlene had offered, once the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives are approved, she had offered to put them into a spreadsheet form so we can tick off what's been done and what hasn't been done. If you look at the Chatham's website, it does say Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. After that, it's broken down to what the town administrator, or in their case, town managers' goals and objectives are. And it's a fairly, it's a fairly long list as well. I said from the beginning, I didn't think that this was going to be able to be done in a year. I also will still argue that in this, there's a very clear and defined set of actions and deliverables. Those are gradable in my mind. The basic goals and objectives, the deliverable and the action is exactly what Chris brings back, and we can grade them on what we think the substance of his work is. And I think last year, without any clear definition, some of the grades weren't maybe not even fair. There was no precise actions and deliverables, and based on a basic set of goals and objectives, I'm not sure how you can grade them. So that's just my response. The town of Chatham is one that I gave an example of. If you go on every town, town website, there was only about three that did the basic set of goals and objectives. And, and with the, with the finish or not finish in a year, some of these, as, as Charlene and I went through one by one, there's a fair amount of these that are in the Charter and required anyway. It's, it is basically a roadmap for us to put on the website of what's important to us and our goals and objectives. It can be broken down. And I don't think that we, reading through these, it, it would be very difficult to figure out which ones would be Board of Selectmen, which ones would be Finance, you know, Finance Director involved, which one would be Charter Review Committee involved, and anyone else that's listed. So that's just a response to Angelo. Julie?
Yeah. So that's my understanding too, is, I mean, when I read through this document, I see a lot of items that, you know, are ongoing, and some that are obviously goals. But I agree that I, I see it as a helpful tool because it, it provides a map. And I see it as, to be able to go through to say, okay, so there's certain elements of this that are already ongoing. There's certain things we need to think about. There's certain things we need to make sure others are doing. So to me, I find it to be a complete guide is my best way of describing it.
Thank you, Julie. Janelle?
I just wanted to say thank you, Michael, for the amount of time that you have put into this. I, I personally thought the very first version was fine, and I was willing to work with that. So I know you've put in way more time than you should have into this. I make a motion that we accept these goals and objectives as written.
We got a motion. We can talk a little, I'll go into discussion.
You're going to second it?
Nope, we're talking.
No, no, we got a motion, someone has to second it.
I second it.
Okay, now we'll go into discussion. Angela?
I would just like you to add something to your statement, because I think it's a wonderful list of goals and objectives too. But what is it for? If it's for this board and that town administrator to work against and get as accomplished as best we can, I have no problem with that. If it's designed to be used as part of the evaluation effort for the town administrator, it can't be. But what can happen is, is, is we vote for that list, and I have no problem in doing that because I think it's, it's a good list. And then we take from that list, three or four things that we want to get done between now and April. And we can find three or four things that we should be able to get done. That doesn't mean we don't work on anything else. But if we don't do that, then we have to stop the thought of evaluating the town administrator on these goals. Because I can tell you right now, that's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen.
Okay, I'm just going to respond real quick to Angelo's, and then I'd like to let Peter speak. The, this is, we're voting on the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. Chris still has to come back to us with his goals and objectives, which I, I would imagine, as he did last year, he will take based off of our goals and objectives. And again, Charlene and I did discuss, once, once this or anything is adopted, putting it into, putting it into a spreadsheet form where we can track.
That's right.
Who's going to do what. Because Peter's notes, sent back to me very clearly, said, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Finance, which is something that will still need to be done. The three or four things, I'm a little, I'm a little stuck on, why we keep going back to three or four things. And again, in these goals and objectives, there's very specific actions and deliverables. If Chris can only get done six of them, or nine of them, it is something we can grade him on. So he's going to run the town, and then we also have goals and objectives. So it's a very gradable thing. And it is, it is basically, what we're voting on now is the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. I'm going to start with Peter, I think, and then, and then after.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you recognize, I've commented every time you've sent out these things.
I have, yes.
And I think significantly, and extensively. I've got more red pen on here than anything. I think it's a shame that, that we can't take the time to go through each one of these. When you start talking about things like economic development, I think instead of the words that are in here, which I don't think are going to get us anywhere as far as economic development, improving the parking at Schoolhouse Parking Lot is far more important and something we can get done than some of the stuff that's in here. And I told you that, or recommended that to you. Improving the safety at the Witcher Overlook, where you see, you know, folks trying to get off of buses for weddings and whatnot, and causing traffic jams, far more important than some of the stuff that we have in here. I think before, I'm ready to vote on this. I think we need to go through each one. I've made significant edits to it. Very few have been included, some have, but I think it needs some work. And we haven't gone through these. We haven't discussed, I don't know who's advocating for each one of these things, defend their position, let us make some comments, suggestions on how to improve it. Unfortunately, I think it takes a Board of Selectmen's meeting, and that's all we do, is go through these things. If we do that, then I don't have a problem with, with necessarily the length of the document. But just to sit here and say, we haven't discussed these goals and objectives, other than saying we have goals and objectives, let's vote it to say we have something, to me is inappropriate.
Just a comment on that, Peter, and then I'll get to you, Chris. This has been talked about now for six weeks. Each board member has sent their own idea of, of goals and objectives. Some, as I mentioned before, are the Operational Review Task Force. I did take into account your last edits. Certainly, we're not all going to get our own way here. Some were removed. Some were removed. Sorry, Charlene talks about my pen clicking habit. Some were removed, some things were added. Some things are more important to, to some than others. And if I took absolutely everything that everybody wanted, this document wouldn't be seven pages, it would be 17. So, though I, though I may agree with you that we could have one board meeting to go through all of this, I think we could also continue to talk about goals and objectives for the next four to six weeks, and have nothing at the end of four to six weeks, because we're not all going to agree on every line. This is, this does incorporate a lot of what you all sent me. And that's my comment on that. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to kind of comment a little bit on, I, I think I, I understand that, you know, these are the Board of Selectmen's goals. I, I thought there was going to be some sense for prioritization. I, I think I had brought up at the last meeting that there were 41 items of action and deliverable. And just so the board's aware, I mean, I go to the department heads and say, here's the tasks that the board are trying to deliver. And I encourage them to work with me to, to accomplish those. And I'm just concerned that if, if there's 41 without any sense of prioritization, then, then I'm going to get, people are going to try to do a lot in different areas, and, and we're not going to be very effective in getting things done. So I, I would suggest that, at the least, that some kind of prioritization be given, you know, which ones do the board see as a primary goal, which are secondary goals, or I think you had said over a period of time, if these are envisioned to be not just one year, but over multiple years. How do, how do we know that, you know? So if there was some guidance that, that could be given. As you alluded to, and certainly this is going to be my intent, I will go through and, and pick out the ones that I believe can reasonably be obtained by administration. And I, a little bit disappointed last year that I thought it was a clear understanding that these goals that I picked last year to accomplish wouldn't be just done by myself, but done by, you know, the, the management team. And yet I was criticized that, why didn't I do some of the work myself? So I, I think if there's, and, and that goes to when I picked my goals, you know, how we'll, we'll pick those this year. But I, without some kind of prioritization, if I tell people, you got to accomplish all these, I'm just nervous that we're going to, people will try to do their best. It's a good organization, and I think we have a lot of department heads that care tremendously and will want to try to deliver on it. But I just, a, a little bit concerned. The other, I, I, I do kind of agree with Peter that having some dialogue. I had a meeting today in which, you know, I've learned that the Acela project, there's only one town that is still, still vested in, in the Acela project. Does it make sense for us to, to continue to, to push towards something? And we just haven't had an opportunity to have dialogue on, on some of these items. But, you know, I may be making the recommendation that we need to re-explore Acela, and is there another better way to, to operate in terms of doing that? The other, you know, just a few reactions. You know, last year, I, I made it a priority of the Finance Director to get that financial software package and, and to do the visual visigo. We had a presentation done. That was never rolled out. That wound up never being rolled out because the board didn't want it rolled out in the final analysis. So I think having buy-in by the board members, because here's a, you know, and I know this is just an example, but to use Open Checkbook in Arlington, we probably spent 100 hours of staff time and $4,000 rolling out, getting that other one to roll out, and then we never used it. And I'm sure the board can understand how demoralizing that is from an administrative standpoint, to make it a priority, to deliver it, and we were a little bit late on that one, but to deliver the product, and then we never used it. So, you know, I, I'm just, again, I think the prioritization and having a discussion, you know, and maybe, you know, from my standpoint, I'll, I'll give serious considerations to what we can get done. And certainly, I, I want to get things done. That's why, you know, I, I'm in this business to try to deliver things. So I'll go through. But I would at least ask two things. One is, if there's some prioritization for what the board would like to get accomplished, to, you know, pick out of those 41, the top 10, and, and so on, or ones that are envisioned to be done within a year, things envisioned to be done over two years, two or three year cycle. I think I had mentioned, to look at six buildings simultaneously is, is going to be a task. I'd rather focus on the middle school, and let's get some real accomplishment in the middle school for this year. And then, as an example, Bank Street, we may have to do a little bit something with Bank Street, but until that development's done at Sacquetucket Harbor, Bank Street can be backburnered until we get the, the harbor ready to go and someplace to move the harbor master. And then the other, and I think this was your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, was to have board members assigned. So if there are issues that individual board members would be tasked with some of these, that we have someone to go to. I have a liaison to go to, to, to make sure that. There was an awful lot of communication glitches last year, from my perspective, an awful lot. And I don't want to misread the board. I don't want to do work that I don't need to be doing. I, I don't think that's an efficient use of, of really resources, taxpayer resources. But those are just a couple of my, my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Great. I just want to respond to Chris's comments. The, first on the Acela, and I think Acela is, is, is a good example. The milestones. And I think the Acela, as far as the action, as far as that as a goal, the board voted a certain package two years ago, three years ago, whenever it was. We seem to be, as, as Angelo's pointed out at two separate meetings, we seem to be way beyond the scope of what the board actually voted. So in my mind, coming back to us with, here's where, here's where we are with Acela. There's only one town that, that is still using it. And an actual report so that we can have an open conversation about that.
Sure, sure.
As far as the six buildings go, if you look at those six buildings, three of them we talked about last year. And so immediately, we'll take the middle school. We've already voted to do something with the middle school, so that's already in progress.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to do that regardless. But I added it. Bank Street. You brought Bank Street up at the last meeting. The last meeting, you said you wanted to explore lease options and other options, so that when we go to town meeting for the land side development at Sacquetucket, we can throw in, this is what we could lease or sell that building.
Yes, the sale of the building.
Sale of the building. So that one's already done, or in progress. So that, that's, we're working on that. Alborough House, that's to be, to be scheduled for the Board of Selectmen because we want to, we've talked last week about moving, two weeks ago, we talked about moving engineering and surveying over there. So that's already in, in progress. As far as prioritizing goes and assigning. As far as prioritizing goes, and, and assigning Board of Selectmen, in my email to the Board of Selectmen, I, each one of them, I said, "Pick a couple that you're interested in leading," so that you will be, so that you will be, have somebody to go to, and also, so that that Board of Selectmen will take some ownership. As, as I explained once before, economic development. That was Linda and Janelle, and myself was included in that last year. Nothing got done. Nobody was, nobody had, was held accountable for doing nothing. That one didn't fall on you. That, that would be a board goal. So, again, this represents what each and every board member wanted, and some information that Angelo sent, that came from the Operational Review Task Force. Prioritizing, a hundred percent correct. The board will still need to prioritize. In my mind, if we vote the goals and objectives, then Charlene had talked about putting that into the same sort of spreadsheet with the people next to it, that would be responsible for that goal and objective, and certainly, at that point, we could prioritize. This is the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. There are other people involved in this. And again, we can continue to go around and talk about changing and going through one thing, one thing at a time. There's nothing in voting these goals and objectives that say we can't go back and add that we would like to do a safety study on the Whichmer Harbor overlook. Doesn't mean we can't add to it. It's a lengthy set of goals and objectives. It is a very specific action and deliverable. There's nothing to say we can't change any wording if we wanted to go back and change wording, but this sets a direction. Chris will certainly come back to us with what he thinks is reasonable, goals and objectives, and what his staff thinks is reasonable, and we can certainly prioritize. Does not mean we cannot vote the goals and objectives. Janelle?
I agree with a lot of what you just said, and I also wanted to point out, in my mind, it's not forty-one different tasks. For instance, in the detail, under Objective A, the, the first four points are things that are done anyway. So it doesn't seem like that's, yes, it's measurable, and we should be grading the town administration on this, but it's not like it's actually a task, a new task. So I don't think it should be an ominous thing that's overhanging, 'cause that's, that's part of the job, the first four things. And going into Objective B, providing quarterly expense and revenue for each department, I feel like that should be part of every department's task anyway, whether it's written here or not. They should be, have that data available for the town administration at any given point. And I could go further and further. So I don't feel like it's forty-one different points. I feel like, as Julie said, and you said, this is just a roadmap, so that we, as a board, can have a direction, that we can show our citizens that we are following as we move forward in fiscal year seventeen.
Julie?
Yeah, I'd just like to also speak to a couple different things. In terms of, in terms of seeing this as, as either too, too wordy and, you know, too strict, I see it opposite. I see, Peter, a few of the things that you identified as, as issues that, you know, may, may be concerning to the citizens, and I agree with you. I mean, if there's other, other things that were out there, that are out there that we need to address, but I see that those issues is falling under a couple different pieces of this document, which could be infrastructure, could be safety. I, I mean, ultimately, I don't think that anybody wants to ignore what the citizens consider to be their top priorities. That's what we're here to do. I think this gives us a, a good way to have everybody more focused on the better ways to prioritize, and then communicate. So to Chris's point, that communication's been a problem, I see this as, as somewhat of a solution, because ultimately, you're telling the various departments within our town, these are different things we would like to see. Now, are all of them gonna be accomplished in a year? No, Michael's already made that pretty clear, that this is a way to move forward. So I don't see this as any way being some sort of debilitating document that doesn't allow people to do their jobs. I think it actually identifies areas and helps us better focus, and maybe we do just that. We say, "Well, you know, Whichmer Harbor's an issue, let's, let's look at it under this piece." And then maybe we look at, you know, infrastructure differently, but I see it as, as a good format.
Anyone else?
Question. In support of what Peter said, of going through some of these, one objective is to support the fire station number, number two renovation project. Would you like to explain what that is? Would you like to explain what it is?
Sure.
I know you know what it is, maybe. But don't, but, don't you think the board, by voting to do this, is making a judgment without having any information about it? Except...
Peter, on that one, Angelo, I'd say we, we did vote to charge a committee.
Yeah.
And I think that presentation was made to us. There'll be more to come, obviously, on that.
I know, but does that mean, but what this says, is we're gonna support that development?
I understand the detail of that, of that sensitivity, because they come back with something, I'm making this up. Norm says no more than two, two or two and a half million. If they came back with something at five million, we probably wouldn't support it, so...
Well, I think as far as the, as, as far as the action deliverable goes on that, deliverable one, number one, station needs assessment. We've already determined that, so that one's done. Alternatives, analysis, and preliminary design, they're working on it. Cost estimates, once the design's done, they're gonna work on it. So basically, what we're saying here, and this, this was important to somebody, what we're saying here is, we're gonna support it. We already voted to support it.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen FY seventeen goals and objectives. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. Thank you. I would, I would add that if you could please send me your priorities, I would, I would appreciate that. And Charlene, I would be happy to meet with you at your convenience to go through how to lay it out. Okay, on to the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have several items this evening. The first one is just a, more of a heads-up. At Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, we have been working pretty diligently. I am a member of the, an alternate on the Steering Committee, to see about making plan design changes or, or additional offerings, to try to control costs. One thing that came up as part of that is that the town had executed several years ago a joint purchase agreement, and that that joint purchase agreement is in the process of being updated and, and resubmitted. So we will have a, a draft document for the, for the board to consider. The town has been a member of the Joint Purchase Committee, for, you know, Joint Purchase with Cape Cod Municipal Health Group for quite a, quite a period of time. It's certainly a, a, a good group to continue to maintain that relationship. I, I believe a lot of the terminology are just more cleanup items, and no, no necessarily wholesale changes to that. On Item B, update on the new public records law, I think we did put in the packet, we had received some material from Coleman and Page in regards to a summary of the new public records law. I, I think the Chair had mentioned about trying to do some informational meeting. We will schedule that. They have moved back the date to January first of seventeen, two thousand and seventeen. So we do have a, a little bit of additional time. Obviously, we'll have to train the organization as well. I do think that, you know, I, I wish the, the folks up on Beacon Hill would, would not just look at one side of the equation and, and try to get some input from practitioners, because I, I do happen to think that we are very responsive in public requests, but always, you know, sometimes too, we have, we get a lot of public requests that are made that are strictly just frivolous. And to, to put a, a greater onus on us to deal with frivolous activities is, is gonna be a little bit frustrating. Just as an example of that, in, in attorney will ask for information, and they'll say, "I want any and all documents related to Item X." And so, you know, now we have to have staff go out and try to find, what is Item X? What's the history? And it chews up a lot of productive time. But, anyway, that, my little bit editorializing.
Chris, real quick on that, have you given thought to it? It ma-, it makes mention of, creates a new position.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have, it, it has a position of acter-, Records Access Officer. By really municipal law, or state law, it's really, the, the town clerk is viewed as the keeper of public records, so anytime there's a request for keeper of public records, it goes initially to the town clerk. I know we had a, an initial discussion with Anita, obviously, that's an elected position. I, I think where the law, the law has it, as she is the keeper of public records, I think it makes sense for that town clerk position to, to also retain this capacity. But that's something that we can, we can look, have a little bit more discussion, and come back with a, a more formal recommendation to the board to, to have her be adopted. Obviously, I think she needs to be on board with all this, too.
Thank you, Chris.
Terms of that. The other, just, I think you were looking for a, a couple of additional updates, or maybe I think you were, on the modular buildings behind the middle school. After the meeting, a couple meetings ago, we had a discussion, we did put out, the police department had an interest in having the, the two trailers for cold storage, if you would, behind the police station. Sean, in my conversation with him today, got a quote for $35,000 to move them across the street.
What?
So the police department said that they would not put us through that, that cost and expense, so we will put together a, a bid to dispose of those. But I, I just wanted to provide an update. Also, just on the topic of the middle school, it was my hope that we would be able to put in some of those hot water units underneath the individual sinks to try to maintain some of the costs. The plumbing inspector has kind of informed us that it, because of the locker rooms and so on, that those individual units would be probably too numerous, so we are gonna get a price quote to just fix the, the hot water system, which is basically what we had said before. I was hoping that the individual, I think the instant hot water would be a more viable approach. Apparently, it's not, not leading to that. More to come. On the next one, FEMA sent a, a letter. This one I, I need to kinda look at. This is a, I think indicative of the Muddy Creek, that it used to be a creek that would be held up by, obviously, more of a culvert system, and now that it's a bridge system. So they are looking for a letter on the map revision. So I'll coordinate with Bob Caffarelli to see formally what we need to do on that, that now that that has changed. I did want to, on the Muddy Creek, just, we did receive a, a letter in the mail, and I, you know, maybe, Mr. Chairman, through you at, at some point, that the Town of Chatham has had a, a discussion about potentially changing that name back to the, I guess the former name of Muddy Creek was the Monomoy River. And I don't know if the Chatham Selectmen had it on their agenda, have had some discussion about it, or planning on it.
They said they were going to.
I think they were gonna. So I don't know, I mean, obviously, we share the river, so if, if there's gonna be a change, we probably should do that jointly, to make sure that we're both on board. I don't have, I guess, an opinion one way or another. Monomoy River sounds a little better, we have Monomoy School System, but that's just a, a very initial reaction to that. On, we did also provide in the packet, the Coleman and Page, it had come up earlier about when does prevailing wage law take effect in, in terms of volunteers and inmates? So we did get a legal opinion. Obviously, from my standpoint, anytime we have volunteer efforts, we need to make sure that we're following the applicable laws. We do have, obviously, a fairly significant volunteer effort that's going on down at the, the South Harwich Meeting House. We've had past work on the Alborough House, and in this past year, in the, in the budget cycle, there was a, a discussion about potentially using volunteers to do work at the West Harwich School. So we did get an opinion, basically in a, in a nutshell, that volunteers or inmates, as long as they work at their own direction and truly are volunteers, that that is something that does not fall within prevailing wage. Just as a, a real brief summary of that. And then we did also, I think I have in the packet, we put into the package, the non-resident taxpayer meeting. I will be taking a vacation, so I, I will not be in attendance for that, but we did talk about this at the last Department Heads Meeting, which was last Thursday. So we do have folks planning on attending, and just for the, the public, so the annual non-resident taxpayer meeting would be August eighth, here in the, the Griffin Room at 6:30. And the topics that we had put in, I believe, yeah, it was in the Cape Cod Chronicle, planning on being on Cape Cod Chronicle on the twenty-eighth of July, and on August fourth, but introduction of a new police off-, the, the new police officers, report on the safety and new door-to-door, a sales bylaw, report of the highway director, a report of the Harbor Master, report from the recreation director, report from the water superintendent, wastewater issues, overall financial position of the town, that will be done by the town accountant or finance director. And we should informally add, I did receive a request at the Department Heads, that where we've had some changes to live broadcast, maybe have a little discussion by Jamie, can get up and, and talk to people about, you know, if you're down in Florida, what, what ways can you watch the, the meetings? So I think that that was a, a great suggestion. I'll give Jamie and Carolyn the, I can't remember which one, but one of them had mentioned at the Department Heads, that we probably should let people know how, how they can be able to access their, their government. And then also, I know this is under Selectmen's report, so I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder, but at least we did have last week the IMA meeting with Chatham. I personally, I, I thought it was a pretty good negotiation, there's still some tough issues to, to work out, but we, we do have, I have a meeting planned for a little later in this week to go over. One of the things was to verify the finances, how much they had spent on it, so we do have a meeting scheduled to do that. And then I think there was another meeting set up for August seventeenth, if I remember the, the date right, for a more formal get-together of the two subcommittees. So I thought that it was an encouraging meeting, and, and hopefully, more encouragement to come. Just in, in terms of kinda wastewater in general, I just wanted to let people know as well, that this Thursday, in, in this room, at five o'clock, will be, the Cape Cod Commission will do their development of regional impact, public, I think it's a public hearing, formally a public hearing. So they'll solicit any additional comments. The board voted its comments already. I probably will add some comments myself. For the record, I am planning on being attending. Certainly, if any board member wants to attend, just to present their letter, I'm happy to do it, or if you wanna be there, you know, I'm more than happy to have you guys present it as well. But I, I think it makes sense to be able to answer any questions. Dave Young from CDM will also be in attendance to answer. I'm cautiously optimistic, after this, there'll be a, a formal suggestion to the, to the Cape Cod Commission to, to formally adopt the, that the CWMP is submitted by the Town of Harwich. I just, a couple other things, and then I promise I'll be done. We did get a, some state legislation that went through, an act to designate certain bridge in the Town of Harwich as United States Navy Lieutenant Junior Grade Ralph Wallace Burns Memorial Bridge. So the, the roadway, or the bridge that goes over State Route 124, will be named in, in his honor. So it just says, "United States Navy Junior Grade, Honor and Recognition of the United States Navy Lieutenant Junior Grade Who Lost His Life in World War II While Serving as a Pilot." "The Massachusetts Department of Transportation shall erect and maintain suitable markers bearing designation and compliance with the standard of, standards of the department." I just thought this was interesting to come through. I, I've never known how they name bridges, but apparently, they have to do it by special legislation.
Uh-huh.
And then just a...
Chris, real quick on that, Janelle, do you wanna come?
Yeah, actually, I know the person who, who spearheaded that, and he's actually been recently named to our Conservation Commission. His name is Rob Mador, and he's very involved with Bridges for the Fallen. And he, along with Sarah Peak, had that pushed through, and they are having a ceremony in October, and I know that he will be before us at some point, asking for support for that.
Excellent. I just wanted to, we, we have had this, this stint of weather, where we've had some lightning storms and just kind of up and down weather. Obviously, tonight, we had the fan going, we had some issues with the HVAC unit. Unfortunately, it was just this, this part of the building, as well as the small meeting room. Sean is aware of these. The community center, I guess on the recreation side, has had some HVAC issues as well. So Sean has really been doing a, a lot of work in which to try to keep up. Obviously, if there's any, a lot of these appear to be that, in general, Sean kinda indicated... indicated that we get irregular power on the Cape, so we have a lot of spikes in the electricity, which really tends to play havoc with the, the equipment. So, if there is anything that's storm-related, we do have a five thousand dollar minimum on our property deductible. So, if there's anything of any significance, he's, he's aware of that and will pay close attention to making sure that that gets, that gets serviced. And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Next up in the, is the Selectman's Report, so it starts with Chatham-Harwich Wastewater Subcommittee Update. Angelo and Peter had a meeting with Chatham last week.
We met with two Chatham Selectmen, and Chris was there, Dave Young was there, on our side of the table, if you will. Couple of Harwich Presidents attended. We worked through the entire marked-up IMA, wordwise, with the exception of cost. And so, just before, I think, this afternoon, late this afternoon, we got here, a new version of that document has been flipped to us. So, we will be going through that, if you will. On Thursday, as Chris mentioned, we're going to sit down with Bob Dunkinson and review the cost material. They thought they'd provided to us, that to us before, but we're going to do that again. It's very clear that Chatham has their number, their nine-point, whatever it is, four million dollars on the table at this point in time, of which one million dollars was, was for stuff, okay? Stuff. We had to do stuff. So, we weren't too happy with that. My suggestion, and I, by the way, it was a very positive meeting, very positive meeting. But my feeling is, it's just my suggestion, that once we get the numbers and we understand the numbers, we, we, I think Angelo and I and Chris and whoever else, have, have to sit down and come up with a strategy for what, and a justification for what we think the value is to the town of Harwich. I think we need some time to do that, and I'd like for us, once we get that put together in a one- or two-page document that summarizes it, my suggestion is to bring it back to this board for consideration, because I'd much rather go to Chatham and say, "Harwich Board of Selectmen voted to, you know, authorize this number," if you will, as opposed to sitting there saying, "Well, I think you should put this in, you should put that." We need something that, that looks, that documents why we think it's worth what it's worth. And by the way, one of the things is, by the time we get to send our stuff from East Harwich there, that plant's going to be almost ten years old. So, just talk about things like depreciation, for instance. They want to put in all of their interest associated with bonding the plant. Well, maybe we should put all our interest in, barring the six million dollars, or whatever it is, you know, there's those kinds of things. Angelo brought up a great point, that, that when they designed the facility and built it, they put the accommodations in, like extra foundations to, and, and extra size of buildings to accommodate bigger stuff, more stuff, if you will, like dry train number two, which they may never need. So, why are we paying for that? You know, those kinds of things. The devil's going to be in the details, but I think that's what we should do. And I think that everybody here should be informed of what we think that number is, or at least we agree with what the number is as far as our bargaining position goes. And then, you know, we'll let the chips fall where they may. We did not, by the way, when it came up to pricing or cost, you know, what we would pay, probably Chatham Selectmen were a little bit surprised. We didn't really engage in that, I don't think. If you look at the tape, we kind of just, you know, like, okay, but we understood their number. We let them talk about their number. So, we now understand their number, if you will. But we don't know the details yet, and that's what we're going to learn on Thursday, hopefully. See?
That was your point. And there's another meeting set at August seventeenth.
August seventeenth, yep.
Well, I would say, based on the discussions that we might have about finding, you know, what the cost might be or to us, we may want to push that off a little bit. I don't know. I think that depends on the numbers we get and which creativity we have in it and what this board thinks.
I think it's important to come back to the board.
Yeah. The meeting that you spoke of for Thursday, is that a, that's a posted meeting?
Well, it's Cape Cod Commission hearing.
Oh, that's-
Well, there's two, two meetings on Thursday.
Talking about the one Peter mentioned.
Yeah, actually, it's just going to be a working group, so it'll be Peter, myself, representing the town, and then the-
Angelo can't make it.
Angelo can't make it, so it's not officially going to be, and I don't think they're bringing their full contingent. They just have one representative, too.
We just hope to get a spreadsheet.
Okay.
It's a financial discovery meeting, is what it is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you both. And Chris. Next one is a committee vacancy advertising, and this is one that, that I asked to be put on. I'm not sure that, I was just looking, I'm not sure that this was in Sandra Hall's letter to us. It is. So, this is in the charter that we have to advertise weekly all the vacancies on our committee. And when the charter was written, the costs weren't the costs on advertising. So, I wanted to have a discussion with the board on whether, whether we wanted to send a recommendation to Charter Review to be able to post those, to change the charter, to say that we can post them on our town website, post them in Town Hall, social media, however we want, but get rid of the requirement to advertise weekly. The one that Sandra put in this week, front, front office Sandra, was about, I think, a dozen committees with vacancies. So, imagine if we have to do that every week, the cost is going to, going to rack up.
Well, it, it, it's more than cost. I mean, when the charter, when the charter was written, that would be the best way to get a broad group of people.
That was the only way.
The only way. It's not the only way, and if you take what they're wanting to do, or, what they wanted to do is get the information to as many people as they can. And the way we can do that same job is through the internet, through television, because we always do it here, through posting it and on the wall downstairs, all sorts of things like that, which I think we should do. The other thing is, we really, the mistake that I think was made in, in the letter to us is, we really don't do the postings. That's done in a different place. And that we had already gotten a letter about that situation, and it was already addressed, and I thought it was a clear, clear situation and done. I just don't know whether we should continue to do the same thing, or whether we should say, "We can accomplish the same goal better, faster, by doing it through the internet and through emails and through everything else." But that would be a violation of the charter.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not sure that on this one, and I, and I think on some of these, Sandra Hall was simply pointing out things that had been pointed out to her and that she witnessed on herself. I don't think that the changing of how we post for committee vacancies is really going to be something that, that she thinks we're going around the charter, but would it be the board?
We'll, we'll, when we talk to her, we'll, we'll deal with it. Because I don't think we should get ourselves in a position unless there's an agreement from not only her as a, as a resident, but from the Charter Review Committee that it's fine. Because otherwise, we're going to have week after week after week of-
I, I guess the question comes up, is it, is it strictly something the charter imposes on us, or is it something to do with state law?
Charter.
That's, that's my understanding, too. If that's the case, you know, I think it's time to move into the 21st century and, you know, recognize the fact that, okay, shame on us, we haven't done it. But guess what? Now, there's a new information technology out there, system, if you will, and we should be using it.
Well, one of the problems with changing our charter, and I shouldn't state it as a problem, is that I think there is a goal for the Charter Review Committee to have any charter changes voted on by the public, rather than go to, through the legislature. There's no problem with doing that, except it takes probably an extra year. So, even if we had it changed, you know, next Tuesday, it's going to be a year. I, I think we might want people to consider things that are not that important, you know, you know, a major change in the charter like this one, if everyone agrees. Maybe we can just do that through the legislature, you know? Do it both ways, but-
Janelle?
So, earlier, Angelo, you were talking about the charter and how the word "only" would change that sentence. So, just reading from chapter seven-one-two, "The advertisements shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the town. That should be made once a week for a minimum of two weeks after the vacancy arises." So, my question is, and Bill Galvin, this, you might be able to answer this, and if not, that's okay, too. An online version of a newspaper, is, are we able to advertise in it alone? And would, would it be more cost-effective? Because it doesn't necessarily say "paper newspaper." Getting picky with the words, but just so we don't necessarily have to pay for a charter change for advertisement, is what I'm saying.
This will be a first.
Both the online and the printed version are the same document, so.
So, I'm sorry, may I ask? So, do you get a twofer? When we advertise on, yeah, it's, so it's already online?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Julie?
Pro, I think one problem with that, though, too, is that you also have to have your account set up, right, to have access online if you're a reader of, right? Yeah, so.
But you have to buy the newspaper, too.
No, right, no, I agree. I, I just mean that you can't even avoid the, yeah, you have to create a whole account and-
Well, I, I think you're right. What we should do is we should send a note to the committee and ask them to please change that sentence to read three or four different things. I wouldn't eliminate the newspaper. I would just add other options.
And make it a non-re requirement.
Yeah, but-
I mean, to me, the point is really to save the town money. We can't do this weekly.
Well, I know, just say, it should be done in, in this way.
So, would it be the consensus of the board to have Angelo, the liaison to the Charter Review Committee, send a note asking them to review this?
Yes.
Peter?
I could just ask, do we want to bundle all these things?
Yeah, we want to be bundle.
I mean, it might be, you're going to sit down with Sandy and go through some of these things. You might come back with seven recommendations. I don't know. May we wait, you know?
I, I agree with the bundling. I just think that if we could get them started in their next meeting on this one, along with the finance director, town accountant change, then maybe it'll just give us a little bit of a jumpstart.
Just tell them there's more to come, though.
Yes, yes.
They had, the Charter Review Committee has not met for quite a while, because its chair had, had an operation, et cetera. But I think, talking with Anita, that it's about time that they got back on course.
Okay, so thank you, Angelo, for sending that note.
It won't be sent to us each-
I just have a clarification. Do I remember correctly, that last year, we committed to the Charter Review Committee that by something like the end of August, we'd give them whatever changes we wanted them to consider for the whole next year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe that should be our goal here, too, to try and get to that point, we say here, by Labor Day, these are the things we're interested in.
Well, I, I, I know enough, the number of them that we're interested in, I can chat with Don and what may be coming.
And I think as, to, to Peter's point, if we can bundle the basic ones and do them all together, might, might go a lot smoother. Okay, the next up is general discussion on committees. I put this on, Janelle had sent a, Janelle had asked me to put this on. She had sent a introduction to the Chair of the Housing Committee and found that they weren't meeting for, until the end of September, is it?
October.
End of October. So-
Or mid-October.
So, Janelle kind of wanted to know if there was a requirement or what the, what the structure was. So, looking at vacancies on committees, looking at the charge updates that we had previously discussed, I had gone into Anita's and asked her to show me who wasn't sworn in on my eight committees, who hadn't taken the state, state ethics test, who had taken the state ethics test. She printed out a very nice document for me that showed that she had received the acknowledgement, but didn't have a hard copy on file, and gave me everybody that wasn't sworn in. I had asked Sandy downstairs to, to print out the charges of all my committees, so that I could start reviewing the charges. And I think if we could get as much information together as we can prior to those committees coming before us, and get some notes to the chairman, maybe we could address a lot of this at the charges specifically, when they come before us. We might have to extend their ten-minute time slot, but I think it is time to update some of these charges, come up with a more formalized, when they meet, when they don't meet, list, so that we can publish for the, for the citizens. Angelo?
I, I just think it would be terrific if you asked Anita to provide us the same data as she provided you.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Peter?
I guess I also suggest, when you look at the charges, a lot of them follow a format. Maybe not all of them, but a lot of them are in the same format. If we're going to change some of that format in one, we should change it in all of them. And then, we should probably blast those out to all the chairs and say, "This is what we expect you to come with, you know, when you come to our meeting to make your annual report."
And I see it as similar, we, in the goals and objectives, we talked about them making suggestions back to us on what they, in their next meeting, so I do agree with you, Peter.
Well, it, it kind of depends on how far you want to go, because do we want all the committees organized the same way? Because that's a question. Or do we want them to organize in a way that satisfies them for some reason? You know, so those issues have to be dealt with also.
Janelle?
I think, yeah, that's right, Angelo. I think each of us probably needs to get all of the information, like Michael did, for each of our committees that we're assigned to be the liaison to this year. And perhaps we have a meeting where this is a large chunk of new business, where we go through one by one, and if we need to speak ahead of time with the Chair, we can have, you know, bullet points to, to bring to the rest of the board. But yes, I, I also, getting back to the, the length of time between meetings, I realize these are volunteers, but I also feel like the committees are very, very important in town. We get a lot of information. The department heads also rely upon committees. So, making that commitment for three years by being a volunteer, in my mind, I, I feel like we should hold the committees accountable to more regular meetings. Four months in between meetings is, to me, is not acceptable. I'm here every Monday, plus all the meetings in between. And, you know, I just feel like when you're involved, you're involved. So, I do think we, and they may be different, you know? Maybe the Trails Committee doesn't meet in January and February, because there's ice on the trails, and that's okay, but other things, like Board of Health meets every two weeks, you know? So, I, I think it's just, we have to take individual committees one, one at a time, but also talk about that.
I think you'll find a lot of committees can't get people together for a quorum, sometimes in the summer, sometimes in parts of the winter, so.
Right, and that's an issue. Then we need alternates.
So, so my intent would be to, to schedule this, you know, four weeks out, six weeks out, but if you could gather as much information as you can, we'll put a, a much longer agenda topic on and start to talk about charges and, and reach out to your committees. I found that some of my committees didn't even have a charge on file, that Sandra couldn't find it, so. Peter?
I'll also say that in the last year and a half, whatever, when, when work was being done on the, the new committee handbook, that in some cases, it was very difficult to get feedback, because the question was asked from all the boards and committees, "Give us, give us a statement of what you're all about," basically. And some responded, some didn't.
Right.
You know? And I think there was frustration with those who didn't respond, like, "Come on, can't you do this? Give us a paragraph, give us whatever." And in some cases, I think they were just written by those putting the document together.
And there may be committees we would like to try and merge. There may be some more committees that we might have to get rid of, and that's why I think the charge at this point is super important.
I, I think, though, that we shouldn't wait until we meet in four weeks to chat with the committees about getting organized and holding meetings and, you know, all of those kinds of things, sw, getting sworn in.
No, I would like each, each one of you to talk to your, to your chairman's and-
Yeah, I've, that's the easiest way to do it. You talk to the chairman, he'll go to the meeting that's scheduled. And the, the other problem we, we, we have, for example, that you might want to consider, is what it says in the charter is that we need to consider, first, residents, full-time residents, and then residents. It, it doesn't say you cannot have people who don't live in town. Not that I think that's a good idea, but we have at least one committee where virtually everyone, as you know, does not live in town, and it's simple, because we don't have any people from town who's, who applied.
Right.
So, and that was brought up, but it's the way it is. It's not, I always thought you had to have somebody from town, until I went for a tour.
Okay. Did you have something, Dad? As long as it's brief. These guys are hot.
I'm not trying to make it real brief.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the things on, on advertising that I think would be very helpful, and just for you people to consider, as a new person- for you people to consider, as a new person, I didn't know where to even find out what was available, or, you know, what committees had open, uh, spaces. It might be nice at, on your meetings, if you announce that there are open, um, spaces on committees and you can find out that information on the website. I didn't know where to go for it, and I had to ask somebody. But I think by saying that, it also lets them know that there still are open positions on there. And I think that might get more people involved, because I think a lot of people do listen to this, more so than going online and reading. And if they know that, okay, that might be something I'm interested in, I want to see what committees have openings, they know where to go. And if you say that, just as you pledge allegiance to the flag, "By the way, the end of the meeting, we still have open positions if you're interested." Okay, that was my one, because I would, I would have found that helpful. Um, talking about committees, and I've only been on one for a very, very short time, okay? And I'm coming from corporate, so we reinforce a little differently. One of the things I think would be very helpful on those committees is, at the end of the meeting or during the meeting, have listed on the minutes, action items and who's going to do what. Because I think what happens is, we talk about it, and if you don't meet again for a month or whenever, what happens is, it doesn't come up again, and it, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't get discussed. And I think having action items, it's like, "All right, you were supposed to do this, report back." And I think, for me, I would find that helpful, to know who was going to be doing what and then did it get done. Not whether they, you know, they can say, "Hey, I, I didn't get to it," or, "I only got this far," but at least give some indication of who's going to be doing what, I thought would be helpful. The other comment I have, and this is directed to Peter, because I really appreciate this. One of the things that I found helpful was, with the meeting that you had with Chatham, that when you came back to this board, you talked about some of the, what went on there at that meeting. And I don't, I don't know that I've ever noticed that before when they've had these joint meetings, other than that we've had the joint meetings in their minutes, which I've never seen, all right? But for you to sit there and say, "This is what happened at that, um, uh, subcommittee meeting, and, um, this is kind of where we're at," I think really is helpful to the people in the community, because a lot of them feel as though they don't know what's happening. You know, maybe they think everything is going well, maybe they think it isn't, but I thought by you explaining where we're at right now, I think it's helpful to the people listening, that when you have those meetings, um, to come back and, and say what's going on at, you know, going on in those meetings, and I really appreciated that.
Thank you.
All right.
And thanks for volunteering.
I enjoy it.
Thanks for taking the minutes.
Okay, Selectman's Report, other. Angelo?
Uh, just one thing, will, will you keep track of the additional costs going into the middle school, please?
That was directed at me.
Yes. And, and let us know what, what that's going to be, because that's my concern when we started this.